Okay, our call is meeting at a city council regular meeting to order at 6:00 PM Tuesday, July the 11th. We will begin with the invocation followed by the pledge of allegiance led by Chief Knight. Please make sure your cell phones are off and you may stand for the invocation pledge if you wish. Father, in the name of Jesus, we thank you for this lovely day. We thank you for this time when we're able to participate in decisions that will affect many around this community. We ask you as always, Lord, to lead us and guide us by the Holy Spirit. We lean not to our own understanding in all of our ways. We acknowledge you that you may direct our paths. Help us, God, with your wisdom to be what we are called to be in this community. And we thank you for it. Be with our law enforcement, our EMS, all of our first responders, those in the city that are recovering from tragic accidents. We thank you for already entering prayer there in many ways. We ask it all in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chief. Item number one is announcements of community interest. Can you hear? I can't hear myself. Ms. Craig, do you have my announcements this evening?
Yes, ma'am. The Kerrville Police Department is accepting applications from persons interested in attending the police academy. The deadline for filing an application is 5:00 PM July 14th, and applications are available at the duty desk at the Kerrville Police Department, 429 Sidney Baker, and online at www.kerrvilltx.gov. For additional information, persons may call 258-1371. The summer reading program continues at the Bud Holesworth Memorial Library with two exciting programs at the Calo Theater. On July 12th, the library welcomes back Dinosaur George, who will bring his amazing fossils. I want to go to that. I love fossils. And we wrap up with Critter Man and his wild animals on July 19th. All shows are at 10:00 AM and are approximately 45 minutes long. Every Thursday in July, the library will host the Lego Club from 1:30 to 2:30 PM. Just bring your creativity as the library provides the Legos. After the Lego Club, families are invited to stay for a family-friendly movie starting at 3:00 PM. Please contact the library reference desk at 258-1274 for information or to answer any questions. The library will host the program Products of the Hive. This is a beeswax. The program will conclude with a beeswax craft. The program is free to attend, but registration is required and may be made by stopping at the library reference desk or calling 258-1274. The Kerrville Competitive Guard Team, this is lifeguards, placed first out of 25 teams at the Texas Super Guard Competition in College Station. The team consists of four lifeguards, and they are judged on their response and performance in several unknown scenarios. The team qualified for the state competition and will be working hard to defend their 2016 title of state champions. Movies in the Park will be held on Friday, July 28th, Louise Hayes Park, sponsored by the Calo Foundation. The movie The Storks, rated PG, will be shown on the big screen. Entrance to the movie and park is free. Bring your families, blankets, flashlights to this free outdoor movie. Registration is open for the Kids Triathlon to be held August 19th. This swim, bike, and run event will take place at Singing Wind Park and is sponsored by Hill Country Bicycle Works. Registration is $15 with discounts for families with multiple children. Register online at www.kerrvilltx.gov or in person at the Parks Office located at 23 East Councils are not available online. Private swim lessons are still available at the Olympic Pool. The fee is $100 for four days' worth of one-on-one individual swim instruction with an instructor. To make an appointment, please call the Parks Office at 257-7300. And last, y'all are really excited about this one. Kerrville City Council will have a budget workshop on Wednesday, July 19th, at 10:00 AM in this room.
Open to the public, of course. Welcome to come. We had a pretty good turnout. And I would add to that, Walt Kanek, that the Chamber of Commerce on July the 18th from 5:30 to 7:30, am I correct? Will have a Boomers and Beyond meeting. It's a new thing that the chamber is doing to try to involve community. Don't have to be a chamber member hooked in, is that correct? At the chamber offices on Sidney Baker. Okay, that's...
Specifically for businesses that cater to the needs of the retirement community for purposes of networking and developing some joint offers and getting together.
Okay, very good. They had the young ones. You're profiling all the way, but that's okay. We know what we are, and it'll be very beneficial. So, are there any other announcements?
I have none.
George?
Yeah, this is one, junior boys Little League All-Star team, the 13, 14-year-olds are actually playing tonight in Jordington, and if they win tonight, that's the sectional, so they would be on to the state level in Abilene this weekend. So, pay attention to the news tomorrow, and somebody put together a road trip so we can go to Abilene. That's all.
Any announcements from the audience? If not, item number 2A is a resolution of commendation to T. Justin McDonald for serving on the Kerr Central Appraisal District Board of Directors. And Mr. McDonald, would you join me in the front? Jump over the chairs here. Standing in your usual place, Mr. McDonald. You've received a lot of these, haven't you? For serving on a number of boards, and we appreciate it. This is a resolution of commendation to T. Justin McDonald for serving as a member of the Kerr Central Appraisal District Board of Directors with the date of service beginning December 2014. And whereas T. Justin McDonald has served faithfully and dutifully on said board, now therefore being resolved by the City Council of the City of Kerrville, Kerr County, Texas, that T. Justin McDonald be recognized for outstanding service as a member of the Kerr Central Appraisal District Board of Directors, and that on behalf of the citizens of Kerrville as well as for ourselves individually, we wish to express our sincere appreciation for contributions to the city and to the community. This is passed and approved this 11th day of July 2017. Please join me in thanking Mr. McDonald for his service. You look a lot better than you did in your shorts at HEB. Get the Fourth of July hot dogs. Let the rest of us. Okay, item number three is the visitors and citizens forum. I didn't have any forums. Is there anyone from the audience who did wish to speak in the visitors and citizens forum this evening? If not, we will move forward to the consent agenda. Item 4A is minutes of the regular meeting of June the 13th, 2017. Were there any questions or comments by council? Not, it's consent agenda. I will accept a motion to approve.
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
Motion is second. All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries four to zero. Item number 5A is ordinance number 2017-14 abandoning and vacating all right title and interest in a fire lane easement located between and intersecting with both Bluff Ridge Drive and Glenview Drive. I'm sorry, I skipped one because your letters were together. All right, let's go back to the annexation in the public hearing. That would be better. Annexation and zoning of 11.341 acre tract being a portion of a certain 1,131.78 acre tract part of Comanche Trace, a golf and residential community located in southwest Kerrville. We'll have a presentation by Mr. Browning, then we'll hold a public hearing.
Yes, ma'am. As you can see on the slide on the screen, this is a first of two public hearings considering the annexation of 11.34 acres of Comanche Trace. This is Comanche Trace number 13. Staff requested the council hold a public hearing, receive any comments, and take no action tonight. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer.
I would mention that it's the PNZ, we have a note here, conducted a public hearing on this item at the June 1, 2017, regular meeting and recommended the council annex the subject tract and recommended the zoning destination of planned development district residential.
Yes, ma'am.
So I just thought I would make the public aware council is. So, if there's any questions for Mr. Browning?
I have a question. How does this affect the ETJ, or does it?
This does not affect the ETJ. This is within the outer boundaries of what we've already annexed, so this is just filling in a hole.
Okay.
And could you give us again the timeline for annexation?
The council will hold a second public hearing in two weeks, and in the August meetings, you will see an ordinance adopting the annexation and setting the zoning.
Okay. And there's no action required on this this evening?
Not tonight.
Okay. So at 6:11, I will open this up for a public hearing. Is there any member of the audience that has any questions or comments about this? If not, at 6:11:21, we'll enter back into our regular meeting. Thank you for that brief presentation. Now can we go to item 6A? Which is the ordinance, first reading, number 2017-14 abandoning and vacating all right title and interest in a fire lane easement located between and intersecting with both Bluff Ridge Drive and Glenview Drive being dedicated to the public pursuant to the Forest West 4 Phase 3 plat, a subdivision out of the Florentine Lara survey number 123, out strike number 225, located within the city of Kerrville, Kerr County, Texas, according to the plat thereof recorded in volume 5, page 45 of the plat records of Kerr County. Said easement impacting Lot 8, Block 6, Lot 7, Block 7, as specified on said plat, finding that said dedicated right to the city, not required for future use as a fire lane easement in ordering recording. Chief?
Mayor, council, at the June 27th city council meeting, the city council directed staff to draft an ordinance to remove the fire lane access easement between Bluff Ridge Drive and Glenview Road. You may recall, the request was made by the owner of Lot 8, Block 6 of the Forest West 4 subdivision, and during the meeting, staff presented information on the history of the fire lane, the current condition, and the reasons the fire department no longer use it to access Bluff Ridge. This is the first of two readings of the ordinance, that if adopted, will remove the fire lane access easement between Bluff Ridge Drive and Glenview Road. Staff recommends council adopt the ordinance on first reading to remove the fire lane access easement between Bluff Ridge Drive and Glenview Road. And I'll answer any questions if you have any.
Any questions by council?
I got a couple of questions. There's a fire hydrant at the bottom of the easement, and there's one down Bluff Ridge. I think the one at the bottom of the easement is closer. Does that have anything to do with the houses there in the cul-de-sac, with it being within a certain distance?
You mean in terms of us utilizing the fire hydrant at the bottom to...
Yes, sir.
We would, if we've got them at the bottom and the top, we would use those at the top.
Is there one at the top at the cul-de-sac?
Now that I don't know, I would have to check that for you, councilman. Certainly, it probably is.
Okay. There's also a survey monument from the city of Kerrville that owns, I believe the city owns it in the easement. Is there any way we can preserve that and still have public access to that monument?
I'll get someone from planning to answer that for you.
So what is the survey monument exactly?
It gives elevation and a northern and easting with state plan coordinates, and sometimes the city requires that station to be used?
There is a monument on the properties within the bounds of the easement. I contacted the owner this afternoon and told him that it was there, that periodically surveyors may be there to use that monument. It is designed, Kyle Burrows, a city engineer, and he keeps the list of the monuments. We can move the monuments or discontinue the use of the monument, but until such time as it becomes an issue with the homeowner, we'd like to leave it there and use it.
Okay.
Which property is it on?
It is on Lot 8.
Is that the one, okay, at the top?
Yeah.
Are the homeowners aware that that's there? Okay. And they would grant the access to the surveyors? Is that something that would need to be written in if this is...
I don't think so. Do you? No.
Okay. Thank you.
I had a few questions too, and I apologize for not having these last time. I wasn't as prepared as I should have been, but in any case, the question he had about the fire hydrants, if there wasn't one at the top of the hill, would that be an issue?
I don't think it would because, well, let me back up and say that I'll check the location of fire hydrants, but we have them all over the city, so I'm almost certain we'll have one within the access of the 1,000 feet of five-inch supply hose we have in reference to Bluff Ridge. We wouldn't be accessing Bluff Ridge from the fire lane, so typically, if we need a hydrant, we're going to catch the hydrant on the route that we're taking to the location. So if there would be no instance that we would come from the, we wouldn't be coming up to fire lane, so a hydrant at the bottom of it would be of no benefit to us.
So the fire code is within 1,000 feet of a fire hydrant?
We carry 1,000 feet of five-inch hose on our pumpers.
Okay. And then the other issue had to do with, it was presented to me, the fire codes themselves talking about 150-foot rule, about getting around the back of any structure, you know what I'm talking about?
Expound on that a little bit. 150-foot rule.
Basically, from, all the structures are supposed to be within 150 foot of an access road point or where a truck would be, to where you get 150-foot hose essentially around to the back, so all parts of it. And if it didn't, then that was supposedly pushing for the requirement of a fire lane or something like that to allow that to happen. It's in the, it got pointed out to me, and it's in the, I guess, well, it's in two places, but the fire code that, what is it, 2006, that I guess we run under? I don't know if that's correct.
Yeah, the, in reference to the 150-foot rule, all of our tack lines are 150 feet, 200 feet. I can't, I don't, you know, I've driven Bluff Ridge a number of times, and I can't visualize any structure on Bluff Ridge that's in excess of 35, 40 feet from the street. So, we should be able to access any of the residential structures on Bluff Ridge with 150 feet, 200 feet of attack line that we carry with absolutely no problem.
Well, that's actually the situation. At the, so their lot is, I'm sorry, the numbers are escaping me. Their lot is on one side of the fire lane. There's actually a home on the other side of the fire lane. That house is actually set back a decent ways, and to get around to the back of that home would, is more than 150 feet.
It wouldn't create a problem for us, councilman. We run into those type of issues all over the city. Apartment complexes require us to lay our attack lines in excess of 150 feet. Typically, when we do that, then we'll stretch an additional two-and-a-half-inch line to give us that distance. You know, there may be structures on Bluff Ridge that we couldn't access completely around with 150 feet, but we have that happen to us all the time, and we would just compensate for it. We carry, like I said, 1,000 feet of the five-inch supply line, you know, up to 1,000 feet of the inch and three-quarter, two-and-a-half-inch line, so we could have that problem anywhere in the city, in some of our apartment complexes and commercial structures, but it's something we run into all the time, and we have the ability to compensate for it. We have more than 150 feet of attack line on our apparatus. In fact, we have multiple 150-feet attack lines on our pumpers.
I mean, that's what I would have figured, but like I say, that's just what was in the code, and it's making it, I mean, it's pushing it as a requirement to have a fire lane when it's less than that, so maybe that's something, I don't know what the current code is, and I assume we're going to be adopting one soon at some point, but...
Just one other point on that, even if, you know, if we're having, if it's in excess of 150 feet on Bluff Ridge, then it's going to be the same problem with the fire lane, you know, that it could be in excess because nothing on the fire lane sits right on it.
No, this house would be out of it. You'd be within 150 feet on there, but, you know, regardless. And then the last one was, I don't know if this is a fire department thing, but how do we reconcile the, someone brought it up at the last meeting, actually, the issue of pipe stems or cul-de-sacs being a certain length, and we're not allowed to have, not allowed, we wouldn't develop a new one of this length without a, well, we just wouldn't be developing, our code says 600 feet. I don't know what the reasoning behind the 600 feet is, I just know it's in there. How does that fit with, how would we reconcile that? Does anybody know what the reason for the limit of 600 feet is?
Yeah, I mean, it's typically having to do with access to emergency vehicles and, you know, utility loops and so forth. It's obviously a pre-existing condition.
Right.
But on future development, it might be an issue, but I would hazard a guess that in this geography with the hills, there's many exceptions to that rule, and it's probably something that we should visit in our codes as to what's really practical. But it's not really an answer for you, but I think this is really a pre-existing condition in future developments when planning departments evaluating the length of the streets, that would be an issue.
But it kind of gets to the, it is pre-existing, and I get that, but if I'm a pre-existing resident sitting at the top of that hill, then we're actually changing their condition by eliminating this access, are we not? I mean, that's kind of what I'm asking, is, I'm thinking in terms of that one house that's sitting up there at the top of that hill. They now are, I know the likelihood of having a fire at that particular house is small, I get that, but they're the ones that are actually being impacted by removing it, are they not? I mean...
Yeah, I hear what you're saying, but at the same time, I'm hearing the fire department telling us that their access would be coming in from that other direction. Wouldn't be coming up that hill. They would run their tack lines off the closest station as they're coming in when they attack the fire. So, I think the methodologies that we would use would compensate for that concern.
And just to expound on that, councilman, you know, the National Fire Protection Association recommends a four-minute response time for our fire units and an eight-minute response time for EMS units, and we can make those response times from fire station two, coming from the south of the north with no problem at all.
Yeah.
I had a question for maybe Mr. Hoppy, I don't know, but in the minutes, or the agenda bill, it says staff has attempted to contact the owners at 104 Glenview. Was that, were we successful? I know, I think we talked to the Realtor, but have they been contacted?
Chief Smith was in contacts with the Realtor. I believe they were out of country.
They were, Mayor, they were actually traveling in Rome at the time. I spoke to the Realtor. The Realtor were, she was able to make contact with the owners, and they have no problem at all.
She was, okay.
They're far abandoned them. They actually feel like if the easement is abandoned, it'll add value to the property, and it's for sale right now.
Okay. At the time, you were in the process. Any questions?
I've got one more for the chief. Can you turn a fire truck around up there at the cul-de-sac? Is it big enough?
I'm sorry, councilman.
Can you turn a fire truck around at the top of the cul-de-sac? Is there any room for that?
Absolutely. We don't have, we can, we have good mobility in the cul-de-sac to be able to maneuver our current vehicles.
That's it for me. That's good.
Good question. Any other questions, any other by the audience? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2017-14 on first reading.
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second. All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries four to zero. Item number seven is a presentation of design concepts for downtown water, street, streetscape, and the show home library complex in particular. Mr. Lewis?
Thank you, Mayor, and council, and citizens for being here tonight. I see that I'm on the information and discussion section.
Okay. I'm sorry, we'll have to wait. Mr. Volpe needs to recuse.
He has filed a complaint.
Okay. I'm sorry, I didn't get the note.
Mayor and two council members.
There you go.
Anyway, so I'm on the information discussion. Hope it's not too much information. Tonight, I'm going to present two different, I have two different PowerPoint presentations. They're two different projects that we've been working with the city on. One of, both of them are actually extensions of earlier projects and master plans that we've done. The first one, and I have been instructed how to use this, I'm supposed to point it at the seal, and I also know that I can call IT Department if I have a problem, and I usually do, yeah.
You got me.
It's a laser, sorry. So, the first project I'd like to talk about is our parking center streetscape, and this is an offshoot of the Kerrville Central Street Plan that we did several years ago that envisioned upgrades and improvements to the central business district. And the, in 2015, we collaborated with city staff and leadership to develop that master plan. For what we define the central city as the area bounded by Burnett Street to the north, Thompson Drive to the south, Five Points to the west, and Veterans Park to the east. This is a living document. It's a concept piece. Master plans are organic. They are designed to be modified as change impacts them, but this was intended to guide some detailed development for the individual areas of downtown. In discussions with city staff, we were given direction to focus on the heart of the downtown, an area that has already experienced significant revitalization in recent years and would have an immediate tangible impact. It's high-traffic intersection, all the improvements with City Hall, the Shriner, Shriner Department Store, Peterson Plaza, so this is just going to be some icing on the cake. Today, I want to share the first phase of the overall plan, the downtown parking center. The parking center presents some unique opportunities. One, it is underutilized. We met several years ago when I was on the Main Street Advisory Board with the city of Saguin and their Main Street Group. They said they would kill for a parked garage downtown, and so we have this sort of a diamond in the rough downtown. Architecturally, it's not very distinctive nor inviting, but it does command a presence in the center of the city. The garage entry on Clay Street is difficult to locate from Sidney Baker, and Water Street ground floor openings allow pedestrian penetration at multiple points and not discourage mid-block crossings, so we have some safety issues. While it's fairly simple to envision all kinds of architectural enhancements which would help it blend in with the historic fabric of our city, many of those would have price tags which would make them economically impractical. So our challenge is to identify enhancements that will have an immediate impact at a reasonable cost and offer some flexibility for future updates. Among the factors we have considered are access, so ease of identification for passing traffic and directional wayfinding signage that directs one to the parking structure entrance, pedestrian circulation with a focus on providing a pleasant and safe walking experience along Sidney Baker and Water Street, which includes safe crosswalk connections to library campus, which I'll highlight on both of my presentations. Sidney Baker is a Tech dot right-of-way, and the city of Kerrville has an ongoing operation and maintenance agreement with the city. We've met with Tech dot on this project, and so we, and we're collaborating with them in terms of the things that we would be proposing here. We have a streetscape vocabulary that was actually established about 25 years ago, and these are elements that can be found in Peterson Plaza along Earl Garrett and Water Street. They include things like antique-style light fixtures with banners, benches, tree grates, trash, things as mundane as trash receptacles, drinking fountains. Then we've got hardscape elements, which are paving patterns, patterns and textures, low stone walls, as you see around Peterson Plaza here, and which define those properties as well as guide pedestrian traffic. We have softscape elements, which are principally native and drought-tolerant, low-maintenance landscaping to soften things and provide year-round color. And then we intend to coordinate with the Kerrville Main Streets Art and Public Places program, and I'll feed you... And then we are, intend to coordinate with the Curville Main Streets Art and Public Places Program, and I'll feature a piece of that. We have structural considerations. There have been some studies done in the parking structure. We've acknowledged those. And so we, anything we do, we want, that, that might attach or affix itself to the garage. We'd want to be sure that, that the garage, that it's, it would not do anything to, that would be an impediment to or harmful to the garage structure. And so everything that we do needs to be cognizant of that. Affordability, finding the very best value. And so like when you go to HEB, you don't want something that's cheap, you just want the best value. And then durability and maintainability. We chose not to paint the building as it would require refreshing every five to seven years. So I've got a bunch of slides here. This is an overview. If you were sitting above the dam on the, above the river, you'd be able to look down at a bird's eye view. Point to there. I'm doing it. He told me to point to that.
You gotta stand on one foot at the same time.
And do it three times.
You just pierced my ear on the top.
I'm sorry. There's an app for that. So some of the recommendations, I'm not going to go through this whole list, but one of the very first things that we suggest with parking garage is give it a bath. And power wash it on all, on the exterior of it and power wash all four sides of it. We would propose to do, do some very modest painting. This, this whole list, I'm really going to skip over it, but I think the big thing here that doesn't really show up on the, on the graphics that I'm going to present is clean it up from the first, and I think that would make a huge difference. There we go. The next couple drawings are existing conditions. We spent, the protocol that we had was to document all the existing conditions. We were fortunate to have the original, copies of the original construction drawings for the parking garage. So we were able to establish a pretty solid footprint for the, for the ground floor. Alrighty. And again, existing conditions, the elevations along Sidney Baker and Water Street. And those are really the two faces that we're focusing on. There are, obviously there are four sides to the garage, but Clay Street is pretty well hidden and it's, it's fairly small, short. And then the backside is hidden by Bank of America and IT Service Building. Just some things to refresh, while we're sitting inside, to refresh folks' memory about what the street looks like. We've got a variety of paving types. One of the things that isn't in the purview of our study or our recommendations has to do with replacing the traffic signals with mono arms. And we, again, visited with text up. They have a plan for that, that the, the schedule for that is, is not published. But that is, that is something that will happen in the course of the next several years. Yeah, I went upside down, didn't I? So, there we go. And the proposed plan, and again, I'm not going to go through every piece of this, but we are suggesting, some of the, the significant pieces we're suggesting are modifications to replacement of the paving that is around those two sides, the Water Street and the Sidney Baker side. And so that is more consistent with the rest of the downtown sidewalks. We would be on Sidney Baker, we'd be matching what text dot has done up and down Sidney Baker with a stamped and a stained border and then concrete sidewalk. On Sidney Baker, we have a unique opportunity that, to help deal with some stormwater flooding that occurs in, in big events. And we, again, visited with text dot about that. And while the scope of, of, of major improvements is beyond the scope or scale of what we're proposing here, we arrived at what we think is a good solution and visited with Mike Carr with text dot and he agrees that basically what we're going to do is build a barrier. And we're going to build a, a low stone wall that will mirror what's across the street on Peterson Plaza. The curb along Sidney Baker at that point is only four inches tall. And if we were to raise it, it seems simple to say, well, just raise it. Well, we raise it, then it's above the floor level of Development Services. And so we really haven't addressed the problem. So the long-term solution of that, solution to that issue, and I don't want it to be a focus of the presentation, but the long-term solution is a text dot solution that is somewhere in the future and hopefully the near future, not the distant future. But, so what we have done here is create two pedestrian ways on either side of that. We would propose to preserve and nurture the existing mature live oak trees that are along there. We'd have an opportunity for some seating on the backside of that wall. Come around Water Street on the corner, and it's, it's hard to see in this presentation, I'm sorry, you guys can, the dais can probably see this on your monitors. But on the corner, there's a little, looks like a wagon wheel, and I'll show you an image of that in a minute. But we propose an information kiosk there that would be modeled after the, the tower, both at the old Shriner Mansion on Earl, yeah, on Earl Garrett and again, City Hall, the clock tower out here. And along Water Street, again, sidewalk improvements with brick embeds and, and new paving. Some planters along the, planting areas along the edge. In the, what we described, the safety concerns about people passing the transparency of the parking garage, we would fill in the openings that are at grade level and compel people to move to either ends of the parking garage when they're parking inside. And so they are also compelled and encouraged to cross at the crosswalks. And what, how we would infill those are, we would have, where the low concrete wall is, we would clad that in stone to mimic the stone wall around Peterson Plaza and the one that we're proposing on Sidney Baker. And then infill the others with wrought iron. And so it will not prevent people from passing there, but it will discourage them and it will keep honest, honest people honest. And down here at the Clay Street intersection, we would propose a stamped crosswalk at both connecting across Clay and then from the park, the corner of the parking garage to the library property. That would be, and we are also proposing making that a three-way stop. And we, we explored the idea of making it a signalized intersection. The warrant for that isn't there, but a three-way stop would at least get people to slow down. It's a tough intersection. Everybody that drives that knows that.
And it should be sooner than later. I mean, we don't, we don't need to wait till the redo.
Absolutely, absolutely. And you know that, yeah, if you're, if you're coming to Clay Street, you pull out into Water Street to see who's coming and sometimes, you know. So in terms of the exterior, some of the things that we've envisioned, again, after the cleanup, we would, we looked at the idea of how to make this really kind of a photo op, and I don't, no pun intended, but we explored the idea of these large mesh banners like on the back of the Tyvee stadium bleachers. And we investigated those. We visited with our good friend Joe Herring, who has an incredible library of negatives from the early 20th century. And so there's, there's an opportunity to tell Curville's history in a very affordable way and also a changeable way. Something that in five or 10 or 15 years could be changed. And so what, you're not seeing what we're necessarily proposing, but these are actual photo stock. There's, on one of the next slides, you'll see a couple more options, but, and these don't have to all be 20th, early 20th or 19th century photos. They can be things that were as recent as, you know, the 1950s. And so we have the opportunity, opportunity to do that. And our thought was rather than do those in color, to make them historic and rather do them black and white, which would be kind of blah, that we would do in a mesepia tone, so we get some warm tones. And they breathe and they're lightweight and so they're easy. And we've spent considerable time investigating with a couple companies that do this and the company that did the high school bleachers, the stadium bleachers. I think it's a good, it's a good affordable solution. I will have a budget at the end of this and, and it has a price, price line for that.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Just real quick. How, what's the life of those banner type things? What are they expected to last for?
I, I'm going to ask my associate Gary Hatch. Did you ever, did that come up? Let me introduce Gary Hatch, architect, 25, 30 years.
Yeah. It was about 15 to 20 years.
So, yeah, and so in terms of, you know, it's not a painted mural that needs to be repainted and it's not a heavy structural piece. And then you'll see some vertical elements at the corners. Did that answer the question?
Yes.
At the corners, we have some, some vine trellises and they, there are some proprietary products. Basically though, these are mesh panels. And for those of you who are ranchers or no ranchers, that there are things like a cattle panel or a horse panel. It's a, it's a galvanized metal grid that has a planting base at the bottom that encourages, it encourages vines, you know, trumpet vine or, or fig ivy or anything that's sustainable in our climate, in our climate and year-round provides some color. They come, some of the proprietary products are off-the-shelf ones, come in colors. They can be in green or black. They're lightweight. They only require bracing to the structure. They don't require any real structural support. So again, they, we felt that those were good solutions to changing the face of the garage without really impacting the structure. You can see some elements. They're a little hard to see, but at the corners and along Sidney Baker, there's some vertical stripes that are awnings that would be, these umbrellas, they'd be UV resistant. Provide a little color, a little shade to accent the openings, also to accentuate the entrances into the Development Services area and then down at the Clay Street entrance to the garage. And then the only color piece we have here is Texas flag and that was just a something, a placeholder. But we'd like to maybe make this, that big wall that is the elevator wall, a place for art and public places. And one of the, one of the things that we thought about and we talked about in some of our meetings was, if you, if you've driven through Johnson, or used to drive through Johnson City at the old mill, they had ones with men climbing up. Something that is a little more kinetic, a little three-dimensional. And that would be a, a call that to artists through the Main Street Art and Public Places Program as an opportunity. Or we could do the flag of Texas. So we've got a couple images that, that have a little more life to them, a little color. Here, immediately here at the corner, you can see we've shown the monopole arms for the signal up, up above the kiosk. We would see that kiosk as being a steel structure that again would have the iconic roof form that is common, that is common to our clock tower and the Shriner Mansion. The, we would envision that as a place, there'd be some information kiosk in there that could be electronic that would, that, kind of like we did at the beginning of this council meeting was current events and a place for people to come do some wayfinding. You can see the vines, the trellis, vine trellises on the corners. The awnings over the entrances both to the parking structure where the, the stair, the exit stairs as well as the Development Services. Light poles, low walls down, down either Water Street or Sidney Baker.
So on the slide before, Peter, you had that mural we see hanging down. That's for local advertising.
Yes. Yes. And, yeah, it says your, I don't know if it said, I think we said something like your event here, yeah, your event here. And maybe it's an income generator, I don't know. And then stepping back up Sidney Baker, again, the same elements and just another look at it with that low wall along the street frontage. That low wall would take us up to the alley or to the drive that comes off of, behind the cancer treatment center and, and to the corner intersection. One of the other things that we would also do would be put big limestone blocks at the corner of Water Street and Sidney Baker to keep rider trucks from driving up over the curb.
Would you go back?
Or U-Haul trucks.
Would you go back one slide?
Yeah. Yes, sir.
Where you've got this kiosk with the, the sharp point on it.
Yes, sir.
You're showing the new streetlights.
Yes, sir.
And if I remember right, about where the kiosk is, there's a big utility pedestal there.
We would be moving that up to, on either the, the face of the building of Development Services. And again, we met with text dot, text dot about this, or we'd be moving it over to by the stair tower.
Okay.
So it will no longer be there.
Okay, so you're, you're, but you're going to move that?
Yes.
And put the kiosk there before you get this new streetlights most likely.
Yes.
Okay.
And so the, the signalization cabinet would really function with, with either the current streetlights or anything proposed. And, and then the Clay Street entrance, same kind of elements and you can see the crosswalk there. And these, this is just a very small sample of the opportunities we have. The Bluebonn Hotel on the bottom left, the old dam, Water Street, the Cedar Mill. I think we just have a lot of opportunities. In fact, if this is a, a plan that is adopted and embraced and we move forward, I think one of the big challenges will be to decide exactly what the first offering would be for these, for these banners. And then just some other eye candy here, to get an idea of what some of these trellises will look like. Some of our native or native adapted species. And the, we've got some, the light standards, we probably, we have not proposed any park benches. We had this in the slide originally, haven't changed it. We have not proposed any park benches. But we would have streetlights, trash receptacles. And the streetlights would either be the ones that are clad in cypress like you see here or some of the ones that, that are just the monopoles that do not have, do not have that base of the cladding. All right, so that, I will stop there and I will talk about. And I can do this now or I can come and talk about the budget after we've done both of these. How would you all like that?
You can do this, you can continue on where you are.
Okay.
And then do the budget. I noticed they're doing a roof over there. Was that insurance, Ms. Marison?
Yes.
Okay, thank God. That worked out.
Okay. So, moving on. And again, I've, I've got a couple slides after this. This, I'm just going to just start with this and let it sit there and soak in for a minute. So about this, about this project, the campus master plan for the AC Shriner House that we all, or many of us know as the Shell Hayes Mansion. On July 14th, 2011, following a year-long remodeling process, Buttholdsworth Memorial Library reopened its doors, inviting the public to experience a transitional library, bridging the wonders of reading and learning through the printed word to a technology-rich environment which connects us with the rest of the world and the future. In the years since, the library use has steadily increased and the need for additional space for auxiliary uses has become apparent. To quote Laura Bechtel, our library director, "The underlying philosophy of the Buttholdsworth Memorial Library is the idea of the library as place." This philosophy understands that the library is not just a place of books, but also a place of community, knowledge, creativity and discourse. In the fall of 2015, the AC Shriner House and grounds were gifted to the city of Curville by an anonymous donor, with the express intent that it would allow the library campus to expand, offering more and varied uses, opportunities for its use. The proposed use for the AC Shriner Mansion and grounds all touch upon the various ideas of place that the library embodies. While the mansion itself offers many opportunities for programming and educational initiatives and some modifications are recommended, some being in capital letters. This campus master plan focuses principally, focuses principally on the use of the grounds and their connectivity with the rest of the library campus and with the downtown, and the rest of the downtown by way of the parking center. Key pieces of the concept are our campus master plan and images, and then at the end, we can get to talk about a budget. But along the way, we, and we don't, we don't go off and do this stuff in a vacuum. We, we engage, ours is a collaborative approach and so we engage a lot of different people in this process. And city staff, interested citizens, friends of the library, et cetera, to help define the project, establish some thematic consistency with the rest of the library campus and, as well as with the Curville Central City design elements. Define the project limits and document existing improvements, much like we did with the parking garage. So we spent a lot of time running around the property and the mansion itself and then create the plan. So, now if you've been, if you're familiar with the property and have driven by there and if, and the next time you do, I encourage you to. Since the city acquired the property, while we were doing this planning, City Parks Department and other city staff have done incredible work to just clear out the riverbank. And maybe many people have not been on that property, but you could go on there and not realize there was a river or a tranquility island beyond it. And it is just, it's incredible how it's opened up. So the, the opportunities for use of that and the beauty of it would just became more and more obvious. So as I said, the campus master plan, I'm going to show you the proposed stuff and then we've got, we've got some, the same kind of things that we did where we went documented existing, but they're kind of ho-hum. So, and we have a phasing plan that goes with this that is also at the end of the presentation. And we, a logical approach to how this thing will take place. And we, a logical approach to how this thing will take place, and again, with major focus on the campus itself. Access, the, the grounds have tremendous opportunities, and a lot of it is really just upkeep, maintenance, and some upgrades. We would propose to improve vehicle and pedestrian access, provide wheelchair-accessible use of all pieces of the property. The connectivity to the library, and since I don't have a pointer, you just have to kind of follow through. But off to the, you enter the property by vehicle from an entry drive that's just here at the bottom, just above the AC, and you can circle around there. We would maintain the existing driveways, which are fairly narrow. So, but a fire, a fire truck, emergency vehicles can get into the, what we've designated as the carriage house. We would have a brick paver plaza that would connect to the library. And if you're familiar with the library, amphitheater that is, that connects the upper level to the lower level, where my kids grew up with the reading program there, and it's just a really cool place. It's got a bunch of tiles that Mrs. Buttholdsworth, Ms. Butth, and her friends made. So there's a lot of history there, but it's hot. It's hot in the summertime. It's hot in the wintertime. So we would propose some shade structures there to mimic what we've done over at the place structures. The carriage house is a fancy name for what was their garage, but it's also got a little two-story living unit behind it. We proposed to convert that to a hospitality space. And I don't want to digress too much, but if you've ever been to the VK Garage Theater next to the Callow, that used to be a transmission shop. And so if that transmission shop can be, can be something else, certainly the carriage house can be something else. We've got some outdoor seating there. To the right of it, the gazebo, top and center of the drawing, the gazebo that was on the corner of the residence that was on that property before the library was built is used for events. We've decided to clean that up, re-landscape it, provide some more paving in there for seating and make it really a place to be that could also use the carriage house for support. On the far left of the property, up Water Street, there are some structures there. There's an out, there's a pavilion. There are some, actually, I guess there were some goldfish or koi ponds, and we would propose to remove the ponds, but retain the structure and refurbish it. There's a terraced seating area there that has an existing sidewalk down through it. We would propose to enhance that. You know, replace the turf, make it a nice place to sit. And for lawn events, there would maybe a musical event down at the pavilion. At the river, a riverfront up to the top left of the drawing, we've got what we designate as an overlooked terrace or a green room for any performers that might, if we, I could see even a Shakespeare at the Park kind of thing happening here, Shakespeare at the library campus. Then you see some winding trails off to the left, and so we're indicating the ability to bring some wheelchair access down to all levels of the campus. And just, just some snapshots. This would be down in that area. That is the amphitheater area. What a lawn event might look like at that pavilion. And then what, how this gazebo might be, the use of it might be enhanced as well. And the next slides again are just some of the documentation we did of the existing. These are, there's, there are actually three stories to the A.C. Shriner Mansion. One was, I guess, a recaptured attic, but it is, it is a living space. The building itself is not air-conditioned, but it's been, it's been very well maintained. And it's a beautiful, beautiful piece. Again, we didn't focus a lot on that. We, we suggested some things that might, might happen early on just to enhance use of the campus, some accessible restrooms. But that's a whole nother project. And our thought is that if we create interest and, and really enhance and enhance the value and the intrinsic and extrinsic value of this property and the library campus, that something like this can follow. See the, our thoughts about the carriage house, turn it into an event room. There's a warming kitchen already there, and there's a small restroom that could be upgraded for, for use. Just some images around. And some of these were taken, yeah, these, some of these were taken before the property was cleared along the riverscape. Some interesting things there's in the center, those two pictures in the center, is a big deck there that we think, we don't know what's underneath it, but there's something underneath it. It's either a bomb shelter or a wine cellar or root cellar or something. But we'll find out.
Is this designated historic home? No. Could it be?
It, it, it could be perhaps on the National Register. To be a Texas Historic Commission property, it would have to really, any, any modifications to it would have, are pretty strictly controlled.
And that's why I was asking.
Yeah. National Register's not as restrictive. It has more to do with the people that live there or events that transpired around it. So it's a possibility. And then certainly Kirk County Historic Commission might consider this something that they would.
Yeah. Before we jump off into something, we need to.
Yes. And again, up here on the left is a little greenhouse. It's down there, and that would be, we would remove that, and that's where the, the overlook terrace and the green room would be. Just some shots around that pavilion. An incredible place, though. So our phasing plan, we have actually kind of four phases. And this, the first phase would be a donor, what we call a donor event phase. And it would be to bring certain pieces of the property up to a condition where we could easily have access to it, vehicle access, and that it could be used to help host events that would be, could be fundraising events or just community events, information sharing events, recreational activities. And then when we are ready to proceed, would go into a three-phase approach. And again, the, the first phase would be to continue on with the carriage house advancement, enhancement, this brick paver plaza and the shade structure to connect to the library, so to make that connection more viable immediately. Phase two then would be the outdoor on the, on the east side of the property with the terracing, the overlooked terrace, the grass terracing, accessible parking, pavilion upgrades. And then the third phase would be mansion upgrades. And these, these would be nominal to actually, the total restoration of the mansion, we have, we really weren't charged with assessing that, but it would be a huge piece of work. But again, if, if, if all of these improvements enhance the use of the library campus and elevate the profile of all of this in the community, the support will come. And we don't have to build it. It's already built, but they'll come. It was literary. No, it's movie. It's movie stuff. And so this is our, the budget that we did here, we worked with suppliers, local contractors, and, and came up with a budget for each of the phases. These are all generally in $2017. So, you know, to project out in three years, it'd be, or two years, there'd be some difference. But this is a sense, it's about a $1.8 million series of projects. But the first two phases, we're really talking about, you know, $560, $600,000.
For the outside?
Yes, for the site scape.
Which I think is what was, I think is what was, we first contemplated when we received the property was to work on an outdoor venue, and then that would entice people that would offer the support for the renovation of the building itself, for those that may not have been here. Ms. Rudy, have you had a tour of the campus?
Yes.
Oh, you did. Okay.
Yeah. We did an orientation for council.
Okay. Did, did you go over these things with them? I, that's fine. I, I just thought if you hadn't, maybe you could walk us through it someday. I'm not real sure about what pieces are still there in this, that are already there in this puzzle and what pieces you're talking about adding.
We'd be delighted to be part of a tour with you.
Okay. All right. We may, we may do that, just to walk it through to the back.
And then if we want to go back, we talked about a budget, and I don't have a slide for this, but you have a, I think you have in your package, projected budget for the downtown parking center.
Is this what we're getting? Here. Would it be possible to get these slides?
Yeah, you have them.
Okay.
You have, and city manager has them.
Okay.
Now, this is the, this is the first time really that we publicly presented the library or the A.C. Shriner Campus Master Plan, but we did present the parking center to EIC in April, but we didn't present a budget at that time. So this is really the first time that we have presented a budget to council.
Is that what, what was online originally? I know there was a, several years ago, the downtown streetscape plan, this was, the garage was in it, and there were illustrations online. Is this exactly the same?
No. This is, this is.
You modified it.
Yeah. And this, we, we took it and expanded and expounded upon. So your budget, and it's got, again, what we did here is we worked with providers, with vendors. We worked with local general contractors and put together budget numbers. We did quantity takeoffs of things that we could do that, and then did some allowance estimates for some other things. And we basically came up with a subtotal of, for all of the things I described, and then maybe a few more that I didn't talk sufficiently about. But, and I see my last line here, one of the things we talked about in the parking garage was to do some interior lighting. It's more decorative to get, get people to the elevators. So we're not, we don't propose to do a lot inside the garage, but make it just a little more amenable. That's the last line item here. But we've got a budget of about $570,000 for the improvements we described. We applied a contingency because we don't, you know, we don't have enough detail yet. And then came up with a total and then applied some, what a contractor overhead and profit might be, as well as some soft costs, which would be architect engineering fees, any legal fees, accounting fees, things like that. For a total project budget of $847,000, roughly $850,000 to do the things that I presented to you tonight. And I'm out of wind.
Okay.
But I do love a microphone.
Well, I assume that we'll be getting all of this. We'll have.
Yeah. So the, the thing that the staff would like is a little bit of direction because we're going to be presenting your capital budget on the 25th as far as a draft of that. And so if there's an interest in including some of this in there without any commitment at this time, then, then some general direction would be helpful, just about your, your thoughts about this.
How much of this was in the original downtown? There was a $2 million budget originally for downtown streetscapes. It included the garage. It did not include the Shellhays Mansion?
I, I don't know. The number I heard for the parking garage, and I heard this, I never saw the full budget, but the number I saw, heard for the parking garage was like $150,000 or something in that range. Mr. Hoppy, does that, do you have a sense?
I don't know from the previous elements that were there. I do know that EIC has approximately $315,000 that's been allocated towards their capital budget for downtown streetscape. In addition, in this fiscal year's budget, they have allocated $250,000 towards downtown streetscape.
And if I may, I will offer when we presented EIC, asked if there were any concerns. And several spoke, and they said their only concern is that we, that we don't do it all and that do it right. And so they had, they, they indicated good, great support for the concepts.
And just to be clear, and forgive me if I'm, I should have been paying close attention, but none of this in this budget addresses any of the, whatever the structural issues are with it, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Do we, do we even know what, do we have an estimate? Okay.
Well, are there structural issues? Significant structural issues?
No. Yes and no, but.
Boy, yes and no.
Most of the garage issues are deferred maintenance issues that we would need to probably reassess, but they are deferred maintenance issues that if, if left unchecked, could cause structural issues down the road, but certainly deferred maintenance that we could take care of in the near term.
Okay. The other thing that, that I didn't hear much about was the Clay Street entrance to the parking garage and how we could put signs or do something to get folks that might come from out of town, and even people that don't go downtown all the time, that live in the neighborhood, how they get in and out of there.
One of, and I didn't address it, but we would propose, A, to, let me go back.
Yeah, your first slide had that, something about Clay Street, but.
Yeah.
Never did get back there.
Let me go to this slide here. We would propose, and you can barely see it, but on the elevator tower to the left of the flag, on both ends of that, those are high-profile, very visible ends. We would identify that as either public parking or the big, the letter P or P3 or something. Put some signage, some iconic signage. And we had some designs. We actually had a vendor, the city solicited a couple of years ago, a vendor to provide some more historic-looking signage on the corner of Sidney Baker. And then again, on the corner of Clay Street. And then we would do something similar at the entrance to Clay Street. We, there are some wayfinding signs that are part of the package that, but those are hard for people in a vehicle really to, to identify. So I think we're going to have to rely on getting people conditioned. And then, and in fact, we didn't, we don't show the Clay Street side, but we might have something like some of these awnings over the, over the entrance just to, to make it a little more inviting or to suggest that this is someplace that you might go. We don't propose any modifications to the width or the.
No, no, no. It's just getting people there.
Yes, sir.
Is my concern.
I'd like to, because this is something that we started off with before, I'd like to see us continue to some degree with the parking garage renovations and improvements because it's sort of unsightly. And, you know, with the modifications that you had, you know, I, do you agree?
Yeah.
I think I'd like to start there. I don't know how much we could do, you know, in the first year, but I think some of those ideas are really good, you know, the awnings, the trellises, the lamp post, you know, those sort of things. The murals, especially if we have advertisers, if that works out, you know, as, as planned.
Perhaps some of the.
Is that what you're asking for?
Yes.
Yes. Okay.
Well, and some of the safety issues.
Yeah, well, absolutely.
To restrict people from just walking across the street.
And the flooding.
Anywhere.
Obviously, underground mitigation is impossible, you know, with those storm waters down there, I guess.
Well, it's not impossible. It's just very costly, and it's a Tech dot issue. And they, it is on the radar, but it's not, according to Mike Carr, it's not a, it's not a radar that he could tell us a specific date.
And I don't want to get too far off the track on this, but we are talking about the parking garage and that water problem. Do we know when that plywood wall is going to get addressed? Yeah, okay.
Yes, we have a contractor that has contract right now. They've had some difficulty in sourcing a couple of the wall materials, but it is on track to get fixed in the, in the near term.
Okay.
The safety issues with the crossing, I think making the crossings, you know, presentable. And the garage itself is a, is a good place to start, you know, to look at that. We've already done, like you said, I've, I've been noticing the cleanup that's been going on, on the Shellhays home campus. You know, that, that's helpful. Maybe some of the brick paving, I don't know which we could. What you see from the street first, you know what I'm talking about, is where I would.
That's what people will notice.
Start at the garage and move that way. Is that, is that what you're looking for?
Yes, thank you.
Does that sound like a place to start?
Yes.
Okay.
It sounds like a place to start.
Okay.
Well, I say I haven't used up my four minutes because it still says four, so thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
My pleasure.
Thank you for coming as well. I guess we're on item eight.
We gotta get Vincent back.
Oh, yeah.
Or we can leave him out there. It's up to you.
Could you tell him that he's ready? We're ready for him. Did you fall asleep out there? Okay, we're done. Okay. We're on item number eight A, which is appointments to the Kerrville-Kirk County Joint Airport Board. Ms. Craig, did you, do you want to?
Yes, ma'am. We have two terms that expired on the Kerr County, Kerrville-Kirk County. We have two terms that expired on the Kerr County, Kerrville-Kirk County Joint Airport Board on June 1st of this year. That was Ed Livermore and Mark Moser. And according to Bruce McKenzie, the airport manager, the airport board voted on June 28th to recommend the reappointment of Mr. Ed Livermore and Mr. Mark Moser. These appointments were also discussed by the Kerr County Commissioners Court yesterday. Ed Livermore was reappointed, however, there was a mistake in the posting of the agenda, and Mark Moser's name was inadvertently left off the agenda, and he was not reappointed on July 10th. It is anticipated that Mr. Moser's reappointment will be posted for the county commissioners' meeting on July 24th. And staff recommends council consider the reappointment of Ed Livermore and Mark Moser to the Kerr County Joint Airport Board with terms to expire June 1st, 2019.
Okay, and Mr. Livermore, I think, had termed out, but he, I think, isn't that right? They decided that they need to stagger these that were going off of the board, so he agreed to do an extra term, is that right?
Well, in fact, they, they went back and reconsidered that issue, and that amendment to the joint action agreement with the airport board will be coming back to you, so that'll be clear in the next, I anticipate it coming back the next meeting.
Okay.
So I was just gonna, I was gonna ask, she explained it, but, so that was just an inadvertent dropping of Mr. Moser, as far as that goes, because I was at that meeting, and I was wondering, you know, what's going on? They didn't say.
Just wasn't posted correctly.
All right.
Any other questions or comments about the appointments? If not, I would entertain a motion to reappoint Ed Livermore and Mark Moser to the airport board.
So moved.
Second?
We have a motion in second. All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries four to zero. Item number nine is city manager's report, Mr. McDaniel.
Thank you, mayor. So, coming around to you now is your monthly capital project report, just to give you a status update about various projects, particularly the larger ones. We're going to continue to add projects to this, even the smaller ones over time, and, and as I mentioned previously, we're working with text dot to get some of theirs on here as well. For the public, this is published on our website. Just, if you go to our new website, you'll be able to find it there under city manager's office. Then also, we had discussed previously about having a third budget workshop on July 25th as part of your regular meeting. That meeting is fairly light, but we do feel like that there's potential for some items to last longer than, than normal, so we would suggest that we start at four instead of six, if you all are open to that, on the 25th. You don't have to decide now, but just sharing that with you, and you can let me know later. And that would be a special called meeting, so that we don't have to amend your rules and so forth, because your meetings start at six on certain days, and so it'd be a special meeting, a budget workshop, four to six, on July 25th, right before your regular meeting. We then recess the workshop and go into a regular council meeting. So, if you all could just let me know at your convenience if that would work for your schedules. The next thing I want to do is, first of all, thank Gordon Browning. This is his last meeting with us. He has done a stellar job as our interim planner, and, you know, it was a critical time to have somebody in the job that knew what they were doing and knew Kerrville, and Gordon certainly, certainly has done that for us, and we thank you, Gordon.
Thank you.
And then finally, I want to introduce Sabina Kunsel. So Sabina, if you want to come forward. Sabina is Gordon's replacement as an interim planner, but she's also serving in the role of executive director for development services, so she'll be over building services as well, and code enforcement, and environmental health. She brings a lot of great experience with her as the planning director from the city of Sugar Land, and prior to that, the senior planner with the city of College Station. She's also been in the private sector, representing the other side of the aisle in terms of the development community, and doing a good job there. So with that, Sabrina, you want to have any comments?
Yes, I do have just a few. Good evening, mayor and council, and.
Good evening.
Members of the public. Very excited to be here, especially that I didn't have to retire before I came here permanently. I've, I've, have a very special love for this area, I've been coming here for, for years, but my career opportunities kept bringing me farther south in Texas, so just very glad that, that I finally made it here, that the stars aligned for me to be here, and I'm very excited to be, to meet all of you and to be working with you in the future, really dig in. I'm itching to, I've, I've already gotten started, but I'm itching to keep going, so thank you very much.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Is that it?
Yes, yes, thank you.
So we'll just peruse this, and we'll ask you questions later if we need to on your, on your report. All right, item number 11A, oh, I'm sorry, let's do number 10, items for future agenda. Any council member have anything you wish to place, other than what we've already discussed? Okay? Fine. Having heard none, then we will move to item number 11A, which is a, an exec, schedule for executive session concerning 800 Junction Highway, the former city hall property. I would entertain a motion to enter executive session under sections 551071 and 551072.
I move that we go into executive session.
I'll second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries four to zero. So at 7:15, we will enter into executive session, and if there's any discussion, we will do that under item number 12.